Deputy Mayor Carr, here. Councilmember Meyer. Councilmember Miller.
Here, here.
Councilmember Sherman Warren. Councilmember Schwab.
Here.
Councilmember Suggs. Manager West.
Present.
Attorney Blor.
Here, here.
Thank you. All right, um, I think both Lindsay and Latricia were planning to be here tonight, so I'll give them a few minutes and we can um, excuse them later if we need to. All right, very good. Um, all right, if you can please stand as you are able for the Pudge of Allegiance. With liberty and justice for all. All right. Hey, Latricia. All right, so we can note that Latricia is here. And um, at some point we'll discuss actually changing the order of the agenda, but for now, um, are there late items from staff?
So Mayor and Council, we do have one late item to report, which is actually a modification to an existing item. And that item is located on page E eleven of your packet and um, sorry, it is item E eleven in your packet on page E forty-seven. The late uh, component of this item is recognition that we did receive a forty-seven thousand dollar grant from Department of Ecology, so we are asking that the recommendation found in that memorandum be changed to state award a two-year service agreement to Sniffer Robotics SVT twenty twenty-four dash thirty-five for an amount not to exceed sixty-four thousand dollars and accept the air quality landfill methane emissions reduction grant for forty-seven thousand from the State Department of Ecology authorizing the city manager to execute all contract-related documents, to administer the contracts, and to make minor modifications as necessary. Council, again, that's just an update to the recommendation.
Thank you. Any late items from council? All right, and if we can note that Lindsay is here now too. Hey Lindsay. All right, um, that brings us to public comment. So first public comment period is items on tonight's agenda. I have three people signed up. And um, we'd also, just as a reminder for folks, have two public hearings this evening. The first is the twenty twenty-five budget approval and the second is the municipal code update, so if you're here to speak to either of those or here for other things, but also want to speak to that, um, we will do those public hearings. We will start the first one on or about six-thirty. So we'll go ahead with public comment. If you're joining virtually and want to make a public comment, please raise your virtual hand at this time. Um, and we'll start with Mark Abshire. And just a reminder, your name, whether or not you're resident, and in person, the lectern keeps track of your time.
Okay, thank you very much, um, Mark Abshire. I am a resident of Port Angeles. Also the director of the Port Angeles Chamber of Commerce, and I'm on the Board of Directors for the Port Angeles Waterfront District. And I'm uh, like to take this opportunity of public comment period to just recognize the importance of the waterfront district and all the work that's been done to create that organization through the Elevate PA uh, twenty twenty-six initiative that we uh, collectively, a lot of people have been uh, put a lot of effort and time into creating Elevate PA um, and and the creation of the Waterfront District Organization is part of that five-year strategic plan that Elevate PA um, was able to accomplish, so today is actually a very um, sort of, I don't know, happy day for me because it's something that we've been reaching for for a long time to get a legitimate uh, organization with a purpose and a strategy in place that can um, um, very effectively uh, expend the PBI funds that are being collected by the by the by the merchants and the businesses and the organizations that are resident in the uh, waterfront district. It's just as a reminder, that includes um, some pretty big and important uh, organizations and businesses. Probably about thirty different eating establishments, uh, none of which are chains, all independently owned. An impressive uh, list of retail shops, uh, the Black Ball Ferry, uh, three hotels. The Economic Development Council of Cleveland County is housed there, the Department of Social and Health Services is is located in the district, the Port of Port Angeles is in the district, and the Chamber of Commerce as well. Um, it is in many ways um, the economic center of the entire county, uh, if not the Olympic Peninsula, so it's a very important district, uh, we're very proud of it. We're very excited for the future of the waterfront district um, and implementing uh, the rest of the five-year strategic plan that Elevate PA um, created. So I'm just really excited today to that this council is considering the contract between the city and the waterfront district. I would highly, highly encourage uh, council to approve the city manager um, signing that contract as staff is going to be presenting to you tonight, so that's my, that's my piece. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Sam Grello, you're next.
Good evening, my name is Sam Grello. I live in Port Angeles and I'm the Executive Director for the Port Angeles Waterfront District. I'm going to read a prepared remarks. Uh, the Waterfront District is a relatively new organization, having been incorporated as a five-oh-one C-six nonprofit in March of this year. Per our bylaws, the sole purpose of our organization is to undertake and advance the work of improving downtown Port Angeles. This year, with limited funding, we have been able to accomplish some cool goals. In coordination with the City Planning Department, we've restarted volunteer work parties to safely restore the view at Haynes View Point Park. We've hosted an informative workshop with policing about policing between downtown merchants and the awesome downtown resource officer, uh, Moore. We've held a few events like Fall Crawl and this past weekend's Hometown Holidays. We're putting up winter lights downtown right now. Uh, we've encouraged downtown merchants to participate in Halloween trick-or-treating by offering partial candy reimbursements. We had about three thousand dollars to give back to participating merchants, which is cool, gets people to actually buy candy. Next year, we're planning a new mural festival in April that's going to bring more vibrant public art onto our downtown buildings. We're very excited about that. We also intend to re-enter our downtown into the Washington Main Street program, which is going to open up additional funding opportunities for both our district and our city. The application process for that is going to be laborious. Tonight, City Council is voting on a contract between the Waterfront District and the city. In this contract, the Waterfront District will provide concrete deliverables relating to the improvement of downtown Port Angeles and be paid with assessments collected by the Parking and Business Improvement Area. Businesses downtown have been paying the Parking and Business Improvement Area assessment since the eighties. No new fees are being paid by anyone for this. We're excited to collaborate with the city, the port, the chamber, the EDC, the Business Association, and all of our downtown merchants to revitalize Port Angeles. This is a pretty cool place. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Sam. Uh, April. And I don't have any hands online, so if that, if you're online and wish to speak, go ahead and raise your hand. And April, you can go ahead when you're ready.
Good evening, my name is April Johnson. I live in Port Angeles. I am also the owner of Fat Yeti Froyo Downtown. Um, I also live above downtown, so I have a better stake in the BPIA as far as what it looks like. I am here to express my excitement for once again having the BPIA involved in the improvement. We would like to thank the city for working with the Waterfront District. It's a big deal. I have a few, I've been to a few monthly meetings and from what I've witnessed with the Waterfront District are doing a great job. I think that everybody involved in it is very much in it. I am excited to see what the twenty twenty-five year has to bring, including the rejoining the Main Street program. And as a paying member of the BPIA, I'm looking forward to seeing what our hard-earned money can do for the Waterfront District. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Uh, go ahead.
My name is Kevin Russell. Uh, I live in Joyce. And I'm going to surprise this young man back here because we haven't met yet. Mark knows where I'm going with this. I represent the building industry. And uh, I'm I'm here for another matter, but since they brought it up, I'd like to say this. Sam, we haven't met yet. I'm the Chair of the Member Service Corporation, which is our for-profit arm of the Building Industry Association of Washington. We identify five Main Street projects every year to donate ten thousand dollars each for that. You're earmarked for twenty twenty-six. Mark shared some times, I just want to tell you how much we're vested in what you guys do and we appreciate what you do. Thanks to the council and to the staff for giving us this great opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. That's great news. All right, still no hands online, so we will go on to consent agenda. We have um, might need to throw something else in also, but um, is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent agenda? Anything anyone would like to add? Sorry, go ahead, Amy.
Uh, I'd like to pull uh, number seven from consent.
Okay. I will put that under um, we'll make it under, we'll make it I four, other consider, under other considerations. Okay? Anything else? Anything anyone would like to add to the consent agenda?
Mayor, I have a few items I'd like to try to add.
Okay.
Uh, G one, the twenty twenty-four budget amendment number three.
Okay. All right, anyone opposed to adding G one? Amy, is that all right with you?
No opposition.
Okay. Go ahead.
Uh, I two, the twenty twenty-five lodging tax reserve funds request.
Any opposition? No opposition. I'll just need to recuse myself for that part of the consent agenda. Okay, so I'll make it a separate consent agenda item?
I three, wastewater comprehensive plan final adoption.
Any opposition? Okay.
And then J two, the Sourcewell contract.
All right. For Amy and Lindsay, just want to make sure there's not a delay and that you all are okay, okay? Amy, the rest of those sound okay to you?
Yes, no opposition. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Um, I know your camera's not working well, but if there's any chance you could turn it on just for when we have a motion, just for consent. It's, I can't do unanimous consent without it uh, being on, but I can also just do a regular vote, so if it's not working for you, then we'll just do a regular vote. Uh, we'll check in when we get there. Okay, I'm going to read it. The consent agenda is the City Council minutes of November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Expenditure report from November ninth, twenty twenty-four to November twenty-second, twenty twenty-four in the amount of three million nine hundred fifty-two thousand four hundred eighty-six dollars and ninety-seven cents. Playvalve valves maintenance memo CON dash twenty twenty-four dash four-three. East City Hall parking lot, uh, LID retrofit memo TR one-two-one-five, final acceptance. Water treatment plant SCADA generator purchase NEC dash twenty twenty-four dash forty-one. Fire alarm monitoring and testing service, services agreement. Large incentive payment to McKinley Mill for lighting project. Intrusion detection and prevention solution hardware, software support, and three-year agreement purchase. Pier tower emergency repair project number CON dash two twenty twenty-three dash forty-five, final acceptance. Sniffer Robotics Service Agreement memo SVC dash twenty twenty-four dash thirty-five as um, amended by uh, the city manager. The twenty twenty-four budget amendment number three. Twenty twenty, oh, uh, wastewater comprehensive and the wastewater comprehensive plan final adoption. Um, any questions or a motion to approve? Oh, and the Sourcewell contract, uh, Civic Field Video Board PK dash zero four one eight.
Move to approve.
Second. All right. Anyone opposed to the motion? Uh, please state your opposition. Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously, and then we'll let um, Navara recuse herself. And we'll vote on the other item.
Madam Mayor, is there a way to not to make Amy so large on the screen?
Um, Amy, it looks like you're screen sharing yourself.
This, this is
the only way that's working?
Apparently the only way I can get on the camera.
Okay, very good. So we'll just keep you on for this part, and then if you want to just not be on, we understand that as well. We know technical, it's a big deal that you're here anyway, so um, all right. Look at that. Little bit better. Okay. Um, so we have another consent agenda item, which is the twenty twenty-five lodging tax reserve funds. Which uh, Councilmember Carr is recusing herself from because it includes a um, recommendation to fully fund applications, which include items that she has recused herself for in the um, recent, for this round, so um, is there a motion to approve this part?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, uh, any opposition to the motion? Please state your opposition. All right, hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, Amy, if you want to turn your camera off for now, that's fine. We like seeing you, but I also understand if you don't want to be um, on the big screen. All right, six eighteen. I didn't think through how fast that was going to go. Um, give me just a second. Oh yeah, that's true, we could do that. Okay. Let's try to do um, the, uh, see how fast we can go with the um, item that we pulled from the consent agenda. So I don't tag all of the parts of my consent agenda, so I don't know if that's Calvin. Okay, take it away, Calvin.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. You'll find this information starting on page E thirty of your packet. The city's housing rehabilitation fund includes revenues received from the Affordable Sales Tax Collection HB fifteen ninety to provide grants to support critical housing needs for low-income individuals and families in Port Angeles. Michael Anderson is requesting a grant in the amount of thirty-four thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollars and thirty cents to relocate a residence from one thirty-eight West Second Street to two thirteen South Oak Street for use as an in-home behavioral health program site. Tonight's recommendation is to approve a thirty-four thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollar and thirty cent grant to Michael Anderson from Affordable Sales Tax Funds HB fifteen ninety as authorized by RCW eighty-two fourteen five thirty. And second, authorize the city manager to sign a grant contract and to make minor modifications as necessary. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, um, Amy, I'm going to let you ask questions. Since you're the one that pulled it, I'll let you start. I'm assuming you have questions.
Sort of. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I pulled this because um, I wanted to really just highlight this uh, partnership and this uh, opportunity for our community. Oxford House is the best practice uh, and has many uh, research-proven success when the goal is maintained abstinence. And to add potentially twenty available uh, beds or rooms for this in our community is pretty huge. It is something that um, all community assessments that I've read have identified as a need in our community. And the fact that it is um, a really nice highlight of uh, being able to utilize buildings and having a partnership between private and um, nonprofit. I just really wanted to highlight this for the community to um, you know, perhaps just incentivize or appreciate out loud. And um, perhaps we'd get more opportunities to uh, be a part of those types of partnerships. I also just wanted to say that um, so for Oxford House rentals, folks who are utilizing that um, Oxford House typically uh, is about four hundred dollars a month. In this um, particular application, it looks like it would be about six hundred dollars per person per month um, to the landlord and Oxford taking um, only a small percentage, I believe that it's twenty percent. But um, and also highlighting for folks that that rent, um, at least for um, the beginning six months or so is generally subsidized by our community and our taxpayers. And so I just really wanted to highlight this opportunity and uh, appreciate it and endorse it and encourage it and hopefully um, be able to encourage additional opportunities like this. So that's really why I pulled it and appreciate the opportunity to share um, more in detail with the community.
Thank you, Amy. All right, um, Brendan, go ahead.
Yeah, just a quick comment. This is really awesome. I think like uh, you know, dollar cost wise, this is like efficiency of this, this usage of this money has got to be like off the charts. So yeah, really awesome.
Thank you. Um, anyone else wish to speak to this and/or make a motion? Lindsay, go ahead.
I will move to approve the thirty-four thousand five hundred eighty-nine and thirty cent grant to Michael Anderson from Affordable Sales Tax Funds, our House Bill fifteen ninety, as authorized by RCW eighty-two fourteen five three zero. And authorize the city manager to sign a grant contract and make minor modifications as necessary.
Second.
This is Amy.
Yep, go ahead, Amy.
I just was going to also second that.
Oh, okay, very good. All right, um, any further discussion? I look forward to seeing it in place and have people living there, so that's great. Um, all right, we have a motion to approve a thirty-four thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollar and thirty cent grant to Michael Anderson from Affordable Sales Tax Funds as authorized by RCW eighty-two point one four point five three zero and authorize the city manager to sign a grant contract and make minor modifications as necessary. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All right, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Amy. All right, um, in light of who's here, let's uh, see if we can tackle the uh, Port Angeles Waterfront District Agreement before we get to the um, before we get to the public hearings. That's the word I'm looking for.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Yep.
Um, before the start of this conversation, I would like to recuse myself. I'm both a merchant in the um, PBIA area as well as a member of the Waterfront District and have uh, put in for um, actually money back for the trick-or-treat candy and uh, other things going on. So I would like to recuse myself at this time.
Very good. So if you want to just leave, then you can shut the door, just hang out in the hall, and we'll come and get you when we're done. And I'm going to turn it over to Calvin.
All right, Mayor, councilmembers, thank you very much. Uh, tonight's presentation is on the Port Angeles Waterfront District's proposed agreement and work plan for services to the Parking and Business Improvement Area. The PowerPoint was sent to you earlier today. Hard copies of this presentation are also available at the Council Dais and in the lobby for the public. Tonight's presentation is a quick five minutes. You might consider holding your questions at the end, and I'll move that through this as fast as possible. Additionally, you'll find a detailed staff memo starting on page J one of your packet, which provides further specifics. Next slide. So tonight's presentation covers four click areas. First, a little bit on the PBIA. Second, uh, the Waterfront District. Third, the proposed agreement and work plan. And fourth, the staff recommendation. Next slide. So first tonight, we'll briefly cover the background on the Parking and Business Improvement Area, or PBIA. The PBIA was established by the city of Port Angeles in nineteen eighty-five to provide adequate parking facilities and other purposes for the benefit of the Port Angeles downtown business area. The PBIA boundary includes most businesses north of Second Street between Valley and Lincoln. Next slide. Businesses currently pay a one-time special assessment, followed by a quarterly billing in January, April, July, and October of each year. The quarterly assessment is determined by the square footage of the business. Next slide. PBIA funds are allocated at the direction of the city. One purpose is for the acquisition, construction, operation, and maintenance of adequate parking facilities for the downtown business area. In addition, these funds may be spent in accordance with RCW thirty-five eighty-seven A oh-one-oh. Next slide. I will note that these broader RCW-related uses have been the historical focus of the PBIA expenditures, which also include decoration of any public space in the area, sponsorship or promotion of public events which take place or on or in public places in the area, furnishing of music in any public place in the area, providing professional management, planning, and promotion of the area, including the management and promotion of retail trade activities in the area, providing maintenance and security for common public areas, and providing transportation services for the benefit of the area. Next slide. The next portion of the presentation covers the proposed agreement and work plan. For the past several months, city staff and the Executive Director of the Waterfront District have been discussing opportunities to enhance the PBIA. The proposed agreement before you tonight and work plan detail the city's expectations and provide specific actions that the Waterfront District will take to enhance and improve the PBIA. Next slide. The highlights of this agreement and work plan include the agreement running from January one of twenty twenty-five to December thirty-one of twenty twenty-seven and may also be extended to December thirty-one of twenty thirty upon mutual written consent. During the term of the agreement and in accordance with the RCW, the Waterfront District will provide tasks, perform tasks, and implement programs and services to achieve the following goals. Next slide. Encourage and promote economic development in the Waterfront District area. Strengthen and revitalize commerce in the Waterfront District area. Enroll in the Washington State Main Street program as an official Main Street community. Improve the aesthetics of the Waterfront District area. Sponsor and promote public events in the Waterfront District area. And engage professional management, planning, and promotion for the area, including the management and promotion of retail trade activities. Next slide. The uh, Waterfront District will implement specific activities, services, and programs that achieve these goals through a detailed work plan that is incorporated into the agreement and is included in your council packet. Next slide. The Waterfront District will also be required to maintain records and reports to the city of Port Angeles, including keeping accounts and records that accurately reflect the revenues and expenses for all services performed under this agreement. Provide the city with written reports quarterly, fully describing what work has been performed pursuant to the agreement. And the leadership of the organization will attend city council meetings upon request to report on their activities and plan future activities pursuant to the agreement. I will just note that on page J ten, there is an incorrect reference to the city council. It should be just the city. So I would suggest a striking the word council on J ten uh, when we get to that portion there. Uh, next slide. As requested by the city, uh, the Waterfront District will also facilitate city-led audits of the finances of the organization, providing all the financial information requested by the city and comply with the requirements of the Washington State Otter for reporting dispersments and legal compliance. And the Waterfront District will cooperate on joint efforts with other local entities such as the Chamber, Business Association, EDC, and the Port of Port Angeles. Next slide. For these services and the tasks performed by the Waterfront District, the city will compensate as follows. Within twenty days after the agreement is approved, the city will pay to the Waterfront District the total amount of assessments currently held by the city. And within thirty days after the end of each calendar quarter, the city will pay the Waterfront District the entirety of assessments collected during that quarter. Finally, next slide, tonight's recommendation is to approve and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement and work plan with the Port Angeles Waterfront District and all related documents to implement and administer their agreement and to make any minor modifications as necessary. And with that, happy to answer any questions.
All right. Are there any comments or questions from council? And/or a motion to approve? Go ahead, Latricia, and then Brendan.
I have a question. I noticed in the um, agreement that they're told open public meetings and stuff. Are those hybrid meetings?
Councilmember, that's a great question. I don't know the answer to that. I would assume it would be to the best benefit of the Waterfront District to be as inclusive as possible, but we have not specified that level of detail in the agreement.
Okay, well, I I think that in light of I think it's, would be very helpful for public to attend with hybrid meetings capabilities.
All right, um, Brendan? Oh, uh, let's see. Yep, and Amy. Go ahead, Brendan.
I was just going to make a motion, so if anybody wants to add a question.
Um, Amy?
Thank you. I did have a quick question, and it probably isn't that quick, and it may just be um, my naivete. But in the information I read, it was not super clear to me on how like the process is going to happen, so it said, so I guess my question is, one, um, the fees that are being paid is that, are those fees determined by Port Angeles? The city, the council, or PBIA, or the Waterfront District? And then who decides how it's being spent? In the way I read it, I saw the Waterfront District and not the city shall control the manner and means in which um, projects are undertaken. And then also it said it was, money was spent at the direction of council. So if I could just get a little clarity on those two things, I'd appreciate that.
Go ahead, Calvin.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the first question Councilmember Miller had is who sets the fees? The city council sets the fee rates uh, for the PBIA. I believe there is a uh, part of the work plan is that if there's an interest in discussing changing the fees in the future or the boundaries, that would require a future legislative action. And the Waterfront District can uh, engage with the city about those decisions, but um, the the fees are set by and collected by the city and then remitted to uh, the Waterfront District if this uh, agreement was to pass. As far as the spending, Councilmember Miller is correct, um, those funds would be fully remitted uh, to the P, to the uh, to the Waterfront District with the expectation they are expended per the agreement and uh, work plan, and that's why there's the quarterly reporting required. I would just note, um, if if it would be helpful to hear from the Executive Director of the Waterfront District about the hybrid meeting question and and their capabilities to do that. And in the meantime, we're looking for a place to stick that lane. And in the meantime, we're looking for a place to stick that language, um, if that's council's direction.
Sam, do you want to speak to that real quickly? Thank you.
So as it is right now, uh, our meetings have not been hybrid, but that's just because we don't have funding uh yet. So I haven't been able to buy a camera, but the plan is that we will be hosting a hybrid meetings. So uh, still figuring out the best way of doing that. Uh, we did one with an open laptop and that just it didn't work out for folks. But yeah, we we want to be doing hybrid meetings, so I'm happy to have that in the uh agreement.
Excellent. Um, Melissa Williams at Faro. We do um Faro does hybrid meetings, so she may have some suggestions of I wish I'd gone this way, or I really liked the way we went. And anyway, might be worth reaching out to her for a recommendation.
I'll hit her up. Yeah.
Sounds good. Thank you.
And Mayor, along those lines, if counsel so desired, on page J eight of your packet at the very top, uh, the sentence starts recognizing that PAWD shall allow public attendance at all meetings. Counsel could insert after that, including a hybrid format in that right after those words, if that's the desire of counsel.
All right, um, Brendan, you are ready?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, and that motion would be to approve and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement and work plan with the Port Angeles Waterfront District and all related documents to implement and administer the agreement and to make any modifications, minor modifications as necessary.
Second. All right, thank you. Any further discussion?
I'd like to amend that.
Okay.
To include um hybrid capabilities for public meetings in the contract as recommended by staff.
Right. Second. Okay, so we have a motion to amend the main motion to include the language about hybrid meetings. Uh, anyone opposed? Oh, Lindsay, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, I'm off task for this amendment.
Okay.
Hi.
Yeah, go ahead.
I have a discussion point, if I may. Thank you. Sorry, I didn't know if you saw me. Um, I'm also wondering if like I think having the hybrid meeting is as important. I certainly will support that. I also am wondering if there is a way like is there setup so that we as council, when we get questions related to this, that um we should be directing them to the waterfront district? This is sort of coming from, you know, seeing things just really um online about things that the community would like to see done better and being able to pass that along to somebody.
Um, I mean, I guess I'm not necessarily the right person to answer that, but my thought would be that if we see it, we let Sam know that people have questions and as the director, and he can reach out to folks. I don't know that we need to put that in the I don't know that that needs to be.
I just had a remaining question that I missed out on the opportunity. Is Sam shaking his head yes?
Yes. Yep.
Fantastic. Thanks so much.
Okay, thank you. So.
Sorry, I just had a quick comment too.
Is it about the motion to amend? Okay, go ahead.
Uh, was I the, I think the hybrid meetings is a good um amendment to this motion, and um I think that in the future, we should look to that when we make all the partnerships uh for hybrid meetings, because it's really useful, I think, for the community to stay engaged in a way that they haven't been before. So thank you, Latricia.
Yep, I will say, um, not that I need to, but um definitely for Faro, it's been really nice because we have a few members who don't feel comfortable driving at night. And so with evening meetings, they're still able to participate. And so it's just a nice nice opportunity. So I'm glad that that's already on your agenda. Um, and maybe this, if we actually pass it right now, we can, you can use some of that money to get the equipment you need. All right, so we have a motion to amend the main motion to include the hybrid language, hybrid meeting language in the agreement. Um, anyone opposed to the motion, please state your opposition? Oh, sorry, Amy. All right, Amy's there. She doesn't have any opposition. So the motion passes. So we have an amended main motion to approve and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement with the modified uh as uh with the amend as amended and work plan with Port Angeles Waterfront District and all related documents to implement and administer the agreement and to make minor mod any minor modifications as necessary. Any further discussion on the main motion, the amended main motion? Lindsay, go ahead.
Yeah, point of clarification. I want to see, did the main motion include the J ten amendment changing city council to city? If not, I'll make that.
Do we need to have that as a motion, or can it be called a minor modification?
We'll take that as a scribbler's error.
You could say.
Yeah, uh Calvin suggesting scribbler's error. Is that all right with you, Lindsay? Okay, very good. Um, all right, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, um we'll go ahead and vote, uh, since everyone's visible. Um, anyone opposed to the motion, please state your opposition? All right, hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Um, thank you.
Wait, Mayor, I did want to make a comment on it. That doesn't affect the vote, but you know, one of the things is the Main Street program requires a public-private partnership, so it's not something that the city could do on its own, and that's where partnering with the waterfront district makes this possible. There's some good articles on additional funding sources for downtown revitalization on municipal research service center's website as well.
Excellent, thank you. All right, um, everyone is welcome to stay, but thank you for coming and being available to answer questions and for those um who with that, we look forward to hearing um updates and look forward to an active group doing cool things um downtown again. All right, that brings us to our public hearings and um, so I think how many people are here for the municipal code update? Which is building code related. One, two. All right, let's, um, if it's all right uh with everyone, we'll do that one first. Um, so, um, this is item F two. So municipal code update twenty four dash one two five to the Port Angeles Municipal Code, amending a whole bunch of stuff, and um I'm going to um turn that over to Calvin.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight's public hearing is on implementing Senate Bill five two nine zero through municipal code update twenty four dash one twenty five to the Port Angeles Municipal Code. The PowerPoint was sent to you earlier today. Hard copies of the presentation are available at the council dais and in the lobby. This presentation is about six minutes, and so if you might consider holding your questions to the very end. An additional uh you'll find a detailed staff memo starting on page F ten of your packet, which provides further specifics on this proposal. Next slide. This presentation briefly covers five areas. First, a bit on RCW thirty six seventy B. Second, Senate Bill fifty two ninety. Third, revisions to titles two, sixteen, and seventeen. Fourth, amendments to Title eighteen, and fifth, the staff recommendation. Next slide. So starting with RCW thirty seven, excuse me, thirty six seventy B and Senate Bill fifty two ninety, the Senate Bill amends the Local Project Review Act found in chapter thirty six seventy B of the RCW with the intent of improving the timeliness and predictability of local project reviews. Senate Bill fifty two ninety is intended to modernize and streamline local project review processes. Next slide. The city had three overriding goals when drafting this legislation to implement fifty two ninety. The first was staff accountability. While Senate Bill fifty two ninety does not specifically address building permits and other development permits, the city has elected to voluntarily include all development permits in this amended process. This will create clear expectations for all staff and applicants and hold city staff accountable to the new state mandated timelines. Next slide. Our second goal was code consolidation. To that end, Madrona Law assisted in the drafting process as part of the code, city's code re-envisioning code audit work, and approximately one hundred pages of current code are being pared down, consolidated to roughly seventy pages as part of this proposal. Next slide. Our third goal was enhanced transparency. City staff have utilized Senate Bill fifty two ninety update to create a clearer procedural process for all project permits under city review. I will note these updates are procedural in nature, focusing solely on review criteria and do not alter existing zoning regulations or permitted uses within the city. This review included removing many procedures currently found scattered throughout the PAMC and updating them to become more clear, consistent, user-friendly, and in a single location. Next slide. The next area of the presentation to highlight are the proposed revisions to titles two, sixteen, and seventeen. Miscellaneous procedures are being moved or updated to become more consistent with new chapter eighteen oh two, and this is all detailed in your council memo. Revisions are being made to chapter two point one eight, sixteen oh four, sixteen oh eight, sixteen oh nine, sixteen ten, sixteen twelve, sixteen fourteen. Next slide. As well as seventeen thirteen, seventeen nineteen, seventeen thirty one, seventeen thirty seven, seventeen forty four, seventeen forty five, and seventeen ninety six. Again, these procedures are being moved or updated to become consistent with the new eighteen oh two and are all detailed in your council memo. Next slide. The next area to cover deals with the proposed amendments to Title eighteen. Again, these existing procedures, along with the newly enhanced transparency standards, are being centralized into chapter eighteen oh two as a newly titled section called Administration of Project Permit Applications and Review Procedures. Next slide. As detailed in your council memo, the proposed legislation consolidates, streamlines, and brings greater transparency through detailing the purpose, definitions, processing procedures, procedure types, application frameworks. Next slide. As well as bringing greater clarity to public hearings, decisions, environmental reviews, application processing, pre-application meetings, determinations, notices, public hearings. Next slide. And more transparency to project reviews, approval processes, final decisions, modifications, appeals, and interpretations of requirements. Next slide. And the streamlining of conditional use permits, minor deviations, temporary use permits, variance reviews, development agreements as well. Next slide. One of the hallmarks of this proposed legislation is classifying all, let me underscore that, all permits as either a type one, a type two, a type three, a type four, or a type five action. Next slide. We've already heard positive feedback from some members of the development community that this is a very clear, transparent, and welcome approach. Next slide. So to recap, Senate Bill fifty two ninety requires all local governments, and I will just note, we are likely to be the first on the North Olympic Peninsula to proceed with this action at the council, to update their permitting timelines and processes for greater transparency. The existing disjointed permitting and review processes found scattered throughout the code are being updated and consolidated from title titles two, sixteen, and seventeen. To be clear again, these changes are procedural in nature, focusing solely on review criteria and do not alter existing zoning regulations or permitted uses. Next slide. Madrona Law assisted in the drafting process as part of the city's code re-envisioning and code audit work. Approximately a hundred pages of current code are being skinny down to about seventy pages. And to better streamline and consolidate city review processes, the proposal relocates all procedural processes into eighteen oh two, ensuring clear, concise, and timely reviews. Next slide. Tonight's recommendation first is to open the public hearing, second, to continue the public hearing, three, to conduct the first reading of the ordinance, and fourth, continue this item to the December seventeenth, twenty twenty four council meeting for final adoption. And with that, happy to answer any questions.
All right, well, no one will ever say that you went slowly through that presentation. Um, um, okay. Let me go ahead and read the ordinance, and then I'll open the public hearing. It's the wrong order, but then I won't forget. An ordinance of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, amending portions of chapter, chapters two point one eight, sixteen point zero four, sixteen point zero eight, sixteen point zero nine, sixteen point one zero, sixteen point one two, sixteen point one four, seventeen point one three, seventeen point one nine, seventeen point three one, seventeen point three seven, seventeen point four four, seventeen point four five, seventeen point nine six, and eighteen point oh two of the Port Angeles Municipal Code. Um, all right, I will open the public hearing, and then we can have a little council discussion if we need it. So uh, we don't have sign up for count for public hearing. If you're here to speak to this item, um, you can just take turns coming down. If you are joining us virtually in which to speak um at the public hearing regarding this code update or these code updates, um, please raise your virtual hand. Um, go ahead, Kevin, when you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Kevin Russell Joyce, once again representing uh building industry. I want to address the council and say thank you for allowing staff this opportunity to help the building community find consistency and make our job a little easier. Uh, I'd like to cite Shannon Cartmell and her excellent work with her staff. Phenomenal job. Assistant City Manager Calvin Goings. They've reached out. They've made the building community an important part of this process. So um, I'm going to change my hats from the uh chairman of the Member Services Corporation. I'm also the chair of the Legislative Policy Committee, and I'm going to do one correction for you. If I understand this as the first reading, if this is adopted on December seventeenth, we're going to announce to the state of Washington, all the other municipalities, that you took the opportunity to lead all of our communities in accepting this. This is law. So we hope that we can get the same great response on two zero six six, which goes becomes a law on Thursday. But this is an example of a partnership between the community, you, your staff, and that, and it's greatly appreciated. This is what we've needed. You ask for affordable, attainable housing. With consistency, we can set schedules a little better. So this is, this is going to be very beneficial. So I thank you all for this opportunity.
Thank you, Kevin. John, go ahead.
Yeah, John Alston, city of Port Angeles resident. I have a couple of comments. I really can't speak too much about fifty two ninety because I haven't seen any of it at a planning commission. So I have concerns there. Now, maybe it was there, but I looked in in prior minutes about some of this stuff, and I attend most of those meetings. I didn't see anything. Uh, so I'm not saying it's good or bad. I'm concerned about procedures. The other thing that I'm concerned about is um with regards to normally, your agendas and packets, I think, are produced at the city website and are available usually uh over the weekend and sometimes on Fridays. Uh, I I started viewing or looking for it on uh on Monday, and it uh, it wasn't there, or there was a link that as I attempted to use the link, it was in not available. So uh, for me to read this and understand it, I wasn't able to get it until late this afternoon, uh, as you made some address, changed some things at the uh city's website. So uh, I guess I've got two weeks to make comment or to understand it and make comments. Uh, but I'm I'm concerned about, again, it not going through the planning commission before it's addressed here. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I know there was an issue with the website that um put the packet on laser fish, so. All right, anyone else wish to speak to the issue um that we are currently on, the um changes to permitting process? All right, I don't see anyone else here tonight. Oh, do you have someone coming up? No, you're not. Okay, um, very good. Um, and I don't have any hands online, so um we will continue this public hearing um to our December seventeenth meeting. Um, all right, are there any comments or questions from council? Uh, Lindsay, go ahead, and then Latricia.
Yeah, um, the timeline for getting permits continues to be an issue. I hear from people about working in the city, so I'm glad we're working to address this. Um, there's a great recent book on housing called Escaping the Housing Trap that proposes that with a standard project, you should be able to walk in the city hall at eight thirty in the morning and walk out at noon with all your permits and be ready to build that afternoon. I don't expect that this is going to get us there, but I think that's what we should be striving for. Um, I do want to ask John's question to our staff of if this went to the planning commission. If not, why?
Calvin, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, this item did not go to the planning commission. As I understand it, typically the planning commission deals with broader policies, changes of the zoning code, uh, change it to allowed uses, whereas the council's domain is typically procedures. And since, again, this is not making any changes to the zoning code, allowed uses, et cetera, it is purely procedural. The decision was to bring it straight to council. Can be referred to planning commission if that's the desire of council. Uh, we do have a January first effective date, as required by fifty two ninety though, that we're working up against.
All right, thank you. Um, any follow-up, Lindsay?
Yeah, I'm not sure I I agree with that distinction, but given the deadline, um, I just hope that planning commission has an opportunity to weigh in. So if I could request that it gets set to planning commission, so they know this is happening at the council level.
All right, um, we'll go to Latricia and then Brendan.
I I my my comment and um, I I know I've chatted with Nathan about it is that throughout, um, I can't point where in there, but throughout, there's like different timelines, like pre-permit application, you have fifteen days. And then like if somebody's going to go and get a conditional use or a variance, um, then there there's a certain timeframe for that process. A- and then once that's completed, then the person can go and submit uh their And then, once that's completed, then the person can go and submit their building application. And I guess the one thing that I'm like, okay, so you have these multiple timeframes that you have fifteen days or thirty days to the city to determine if the application is complete. I think that we need to make sure that we have the ability, or not we, well, we and the builders have the ability to do concurrently submit permit applications. So as somebody's waiting for a variance review, they can still submit a building application, and that building application would be, you know, conditioned on the decision at the variance. But you've already started as much as you can, so you're cutting down on those timelines. So I mean, I already see eighteen point zero two point zero concurrent environmental reviews, so development permit applications subject to CIPA can be reviewed. There's a current policy there. So it'd be nice that if we were able to identify the ability to provide concurrent review on these applications and different types of, like your variance, and then your different types of building permits, if there can be some type of concurrent, because that does speed up the project. I mean, I work in natural resources, and we have to go after permits also, but we can submit permits, multiple permits at the same time. We don't have to wait till one is done. So it helps to shorten our timeframe and our timeline, and that would probably be helpful in the building industry, but it might already be there. So if it is there, can you please let me know? I mean, like I said, I didn't read every line by line, and so.
So page seventy-six, line two, subpage A, you can't recite that, council member. This is an, so, point well taken. This is a really important step. You know, some jurisdictions are going to do the minimum. We went all in. In fact, at the very back of your hard copy PowerPoint on the dais, you'll see the typology chart, and every permit has been listed out. I think we're the only jurisdiction that we're aware of so far to do that, and CED manager Cartmel deserves credit for coming up with that approach. And I think, as Mr. Russell said, well, I think we'll be one of the first in the state to do that. So our goal is, yes, to do as much concurrently as possible. And if there's opportunities to, I think, emphasize that more in the code between now and the next two weeks when we come back, we can look at those opportunities.
Okay, and then I have one more question. Are we going to train staff so that implementing this is easy? I mean, I'm sure there's going to be hiccups, but is there a training opportunity for staff so that when customers come in or that, you know, there's no bumps in the road, or at least we've at least smoothed out the major hiccups?
So, Mayor and Council, I think CED manager Cartmel wanted to say something about the concurrency, maybe if she has a chance to start walking up to the other dais, I'll make an answer to that question. So, yes, we are not waiting, we're dual tracking, just like you're asking for permits, doing things concurrently. So we actually had a meeting today with Public Works to talk about how we collectively, I think, as you also are familiar, the city is embarking on a multi-year, multimillion-dollar enterprise permitting and license project. That will be fully live for CED and Public Works permits later next year. So in the meantime, we're going to be doing this by hand to keep track of all of these timelines, but we are very focused on making sure that when we tell folks sixty-five days for a type one, we get it done before sixty-five days. And our goal ultimately will be to share with you a report card on a quarterly basis on how we're doing with those timelines. So we are very much focused on that. And I want to share a little bit now, if I could, and this was City Manager Wes's idea. We are exploring, as we speak, a type zero type of permits that could be over the counter. So we are really interested in trying to do that. More to come in two weeks, but City Manager Wes deserves the credit for laying down the gauntlet. You got type one, type two, type three, type four, type five. How about a type zero, which is over the counter, you know, forty-eight hours? And so more to come in the next two weeks on that.
All right, so I want to address your consolidated concern. So it is part of Senate Bill fifty-two ninety that local jurisdictions need to include optional processes for consolidated permit processing. And so you'll find that on page F fifty-eight of the code, eighteen oh two oh four oh, option B. So it's actually by state regulation left up to the applicant to decide if they want to process it concurrently or individually. Of course, as staff, I think we will almost always recommend that they go through the processes concurrently unless there's some inherent risk with that.
Thank you.
Better go and memorize that, huh? Better go and memorize that now. And thanks, Nathan, for making that suggestion. It sounds like, Mike, Nate, put a smile on Lindsay's face there.
All right, we'll go to Brendan, and then Amy.
Just to clarify, this got rid of thirty pages, you said? Yeah, good job. Thank you.
And how many days? That's the other, thirty pages and a number of days.
Thirty pages and days? Oh, my goodness, thank you, guys.
Amy, go ahead.
I guess I just sort of want to jump on the gratitude train. Specifically, it would like to call out Assistant Manager Goings and CED manager Cartnell for being leaders in our community in this. I think to engage with our building community is a great thing, but to get positive glowing feedback, I'm clapping, you can't see me because my camera doesn't work, but just wanted to really throw that out there and provide many thanks and appreciation for that. I think this is the kind of relationship we want to have with our community. So thank you so very much for being leaders in that way, guys.
Thank you, Amy. All right.
Mayor, if I could address some of the public testimony we heard tonight. I do want to apologize on behalf of the city for an issue we had with our Civic Plus service provider for our website. We did, in fact, post the packet on Tuesday evening, recognizing the holiday. We wanted to get it up well in advance. Unfortunately, the Civic Plus platform was not working appropriately. We did get a ticket into them the following day on Wednesday, and unfortunately, until today, we did not see that ticket resolved by Civic Plus, not without a great deal of staff effort trying to push for them to get that update made. We did immediately ensure that there was an active link that could be cut and pasted for download of the packet last Wednesday, and so it should be available. It was not probably as seamless as we like to see it, and we do apologize for that issue.
All right, thank you. Great timing, right before, right before a four-day weekend. All right, any other comments or questions from council? Lindsay, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, maybe because I'm not in the room, I didn't see it, but I just wanted to confirm that city staff are going to notify Planning Commission of this, and they intend a timeline that will likely pass it at our next council meeting?
That is what Calvin indicated, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Excellent. All right, then we will continue this item to the December seventeenth meeting. We do have the budget public hearing, but I'm going to suggest we take a five-minute break and come back and talk about the budget. We're going to be here all night. I don't want to be here all night. We are, okay. We are now on item F one because I rearranged, so we are at the twenty twenty-five budget. Nathan, do you want to start that?
So Mayor and Council, I'm going to turn it directly over to Director Karazos.
All right.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. This is our final step in the adoption of the twenty twenty-five budget, and there have been multiple presentations, work sessions, and information that have been provided regarding the twenty twenty-five proposed budget, with the final public hearing occurring tonight. The adoption of the budget each year is one of the most significant items that occurs as it sets the funding needed for the city operations and for the services that are provided for the coming year. And as a reminder, the twenty twenty-five budget is balanced in the amount of one hundred and fifty-six point nine million dollars, with priorities in alignment with the city's strategic plan. Since the preliminary budget was published on October ninth, there have been some changes in the amount of seven point four million dollars for capital projects that have not yet started in the twenty twenty-four year that will carry into the twenty twenty-five budget. Additionally, there, since the first reading of the ordinance, there has been a change for the lodging tax-funded items that were approved at the council meeting on the nineteenth that have been included in the twenty twenty-five budget. And that did increase the overall budget by approximately two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. These changes are detailed on page F three, or PF, page fifty-three of your packet. And tonight's staff is requesting that council continue the public hearing from the, on the twenty twenty-five budget, from the November nineteenth meeting, that you close that public hearing and conduct the second reading of the ordinance, adopting the twenty twenty-five budget, and adopt the ordinance.
All right, thank you. We'll go ahead and open the public, or continue the public hearing. So anyone here who wishes to speak to the budget, and if you are online and wish to speak to the twenty twenty-five budget, please raise your virtual hand, and we'll wait just a minute and see if anybody wants to speak. Come on down, John.
Yeah, John Ralston, City of Port Angeles. You've never heard this before. I don't know, is it a specific line item within the budget? But we'll talk about spending too much money, because budgets, to me, mean both generating revenue and spending money. So I'm concerned, again, about the expenses involved with the proposed items, the nine-one-one center and the emergency center, and sort of a checkbook that another government entity is asking you guys to get involved in, and I would encourage you to look strongly at alternatives, reducing sizes of buildings. I know they've already proposing changing locations, apparently maybe a poor decision was made on the first go-around. I'd strongly, as I've said before, maybe four or five years ago, I think the most ideal location in Port Angeles is to use Shane and the tennis courts there. I realize it's not the most ideal situation in the dream of proximity to an airport. I would encourage you to look how many emergency operation centers are within certainly the state of Washington and throughout the United States that don't have immediate proximity to an airport. The unused tennis courts at Shane Park, as proposed with the square footages of the two buildings, that are too large, in my opinion, would fit on those two tennis courts, or that unused tennis court. Sewer's there, water's there, you got a helicopter landing pad on the field, and you got ample parking. We also don't have monthly outlay of revenue for leasing land, as I assume you will be at the port, and I'm assuming you'll be paying a fee that's appropriate what any other entities using port properties would be doing. So again, something I'd look at very carefully. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to the budget? This is the budget public hearing, so anyone else? I don't see any hands online. So I'll close the public hearing and open it up for council discussion. Let me, before we do that, read the ordinance. An ordinance of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, adopting the twenty twenty-five budget for the fiscal year ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. All right, Lindsay, go ahead.
Well, with the center that the public comment just referred to, we were in port property for site one and port property for site two, but I thought site three is not port property that we bought it with the county. Is it still site three, or is it now site four?
Counsel, it is still our selected site.
Site three, yeah. Okay. Anyone else have questions, comments, or a motion to approve? Go ahead, Navara. Go ahead, Navara.
I move to adopt the 2025 budget ordinance.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, let's just do regular voting since Amy's camera's not working. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. All right, thank you. Let's go to G2. Thank you, Serena, for your work. Well, really to everyone. The budget is, I was like, all right, moving on. But we should probably pause for just a second. That was a lot of work. It's not just Serena, I know, but a lot for Serena and your department and for all the departments to get us to work together to get us to a balanced budget. So thank you for doing that. And we already did the budget amendment. So G2 is utility base rate of voluntary shut off. And I'm going to go to Serena for that.
Good evening. So this next item can be found on page G10 or PF page 150 for following along online in your packet. And it does involve charging base rates when voluntary disconnection of utility services are requested. This has been included in the city's strategic plan and discussed by City Council and the Utility Advisory Committee with a favorable recommendation for adoption provided by the UAC in August of 2023. At this time, staff is recommending that council include the changes for charging base rates to residential and commercial vacant properties in two phases, with the first phase including applying charges to voluntary disconnections due to the time intensive nature of assessing and creating utility accounts for all vacant properties citywide. So that's a bigger project that will be a little bit more manual. And so we're requesting that as a phase two. Staff is recommending an addition to the city code, section 13.16.010 that grants the city authority to charge the base rate for all services provided regardless of use or consumption. And further, it is intended that this would apply to all utility account types, which include residential and commercial. I think it's also important to understand within this process that the city is required to reserve and plan for water and power to all customers within our service area regardless of the usage. So we have to ensure that there's enough power and water for all of the customers that we provide those services to. These costs, as well as the maintenance and operational costs for each utility, are built into the city's base rates. And when users voluntarily disconnect from the system, we are still responsible to complete and plan for all of the items that were mentioned. So charging the base rate to these customers that voluntarily disconnect services while they continue to receive those services prevents subsidies to the customers as those costs are fixed. So other customers are essentially subsidizing those disconnection of services because we are still required to maintain the lines and pipes that go to all of those residences and to those commercial properties. So this change will create some fairness for all users for those services that are provided. So tonight is the first reading of the ordinance amending section 13.16.010 of the Port Angeles Municipal Code related to utility account fees with adoption of this ordinance planned for December 17th.
Thank you, Serena. I'll go ahead and read the ordinance and then we can have council discussion. An ordinance of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, amending section 13.16.010 of the Port Angeles Municipal Code relating to utility account fees. Are there comments or questions from council? Navara, go ahead.
Yes, I'm really delighted to see this on our agenda. I think we've been talking about it for a long time. And I think that something that we as council talk about quite a lot is equity. And I think that this is one way that we can have a more equitable utility structure and that people, you know, are going to be paying their fair share for the utilities and that the burden isn't going to fall on, you know, full time residents to subsidize people who live here part time or who have investment homes that are being unused for anything else. So I'm really glad to see this. And I think it really fits within our goals of increasing equity across the city. So thank you.
Thank you, Navara. Any other council members wish to speak to this? Brendan, go ahead.
I'm just curious, what kind of estimates of revenue generation do you think this will generate?
At this time, we don't currently track the number of customers that are voluntarily disconnecting. We estimate it somewhere between 50 and 200. So monthly on the base rate, we would say about 150 or so dollars for each month. So I don't have an exact number. That's something that we would have to go through and probably pull a report for just because we have not been tracking that to date.
Okay, that's good. We'll see it when it comes up, I guess it's all good.
Lindsay, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm glad we're moving forward with this. This is in line with our theory of how our utility rates are structured in that the base rate is the cost of bringing the service to the parcel. And then the consumptive rate is the amount of kilowatt hours or cubic feet of water used on that parcel. So we're paying that cost to bring the utility to a parcel and they should pay the base rate for it. That's in line with the model we're using.
Anyone else? All right, I would agree. And we had a good discussion about it. I mean, it was a while ago, but I remember having this, having a conversation about this at UAC. That it is, this is sort of that beginning step of when we talked about it's helping fill that or not removing those people from being a part of the number that we're dividing by to get our rates. And when we talk about, you know, we're trying, one of the benefits of increasing density, for example, is we have more users, then the cost goes down for everyone. And so this is sort of the bringing us up to a basic standard. As we build that out, it will be less expensive for everyone. But I agree with the other council members who have said that this is a good move from an equity perspective when we talk about utility rates. So happy to support it when we get to the 17th. Anything else? All right, then we will continue this item to the December 17th meeting. And just a second. Move on to the last ordinance item. I flag all my ordinances with the same color in all of my packets. And this is the last yellow flag for tonight. And this is work that I've been a part of, but I'm going to turn it over to Nathan to kick it off.
So Mayor and Council, this is a really important item before you this evening. You can find this item on page G3 of the packet. And it's about the code re-envisioning for our boards and commissions. So as council is aware, there've been a number of really important steps made by City Council, including two consecutive work sessions on the topic. And then ultimately, council appointed a three council member ad hoc committee, which held approximately six different meetings looking at the details of what are those changes and efficiencies that we can gain in the Boards and Commissions Code as well as improvements of the overall function and particularly in the realm of communication. So tonight before you, you see a recommendation that incorporates many of the major topics you all discussed in those work sessions. It includes major updates to the Civil Service Code, which generally is an exception from those other boards and commissions. And that particular section of code principally follows state statute. So it's a little bit different from the rest of the boards and commissions. But for the vast majority of boards and commissions, we now see a standardized procedure introduced, including a standard membership of seven members, standard terms of two four-year terms. It establishes a city residency requirement for all boards, with the UAC being one exception. We also see the creation of clear communication channels between councils, staff and boards. And every committee will have an opportunity for a youth advisor representative. And then finally, it also establishes quorum of a simple majority of those positions filled. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Attorney Bloor to see if he has anything to add to the staff report. And then it might be beneficial for some of our ad hoc committee representatives from council to also join in and share about a little bit of the work that was done, recognizing there was a lot of hard work and lots of gratitude from staff for the hard work of the council members involved. Bill, anything to add?
Not really. That as the council can note, there are a multitude of details in this ordinance. And if we went over all of them, it would take an extended period of time to recount all the changes and the considerations that went into these. I will say that I think I was impressed by the ad hoc committee and the depth of thought that they gave to each element of this revised code. So I'm not going to go in. I'm not going to try to recount any of the details. But if there are any questions, I will be available to try to answer them.
Thank you, Bill. Drew or Lindsay, do either of you want to speak to your thoughts on the process or anything you want to be sure we highlight from the process?
I'll just mention briefly, first off, I'm hesitant to mention any specific changes because having pulled over this before I was even a council member and then the last five or so months at this point, there's a 50/50 that whatever my comment is doesn't apply to a section that still exists. So I'm going to refrain from that. However, I've been a huge supporter for a very long time of consistency and making everything the same across the board. I know with the PSAB, when I became the chair of that, city staff had to track down the bylaws on mimeographs in a filing cabinet somewhere. So having a updated single section for everyone to be able to reference with everything laid out is phenomenal and great. And I'm very appreciative of how well the ad hoc committee was able to work to address all of our concerns at the committee level, all of our concerns. And I think we put together a document that is a good blend of all of our opinions on how this should operate. And that's all I have at the moment.
Thank you, Drew. Lindsay, go ahead.
Yeah, we're trying to look at this being more like an instruction book for committee members so that it's clear when committee members are doing their work on the committee on behalf of the city, that they understand their duties, their responsibilities, their powers, their rights. And that it's clear too for city staff and also for city council in how we work with the committees. So I'm thinking about the connection between these committees and advisory committees doing work leading to city adoption or by the council or, you know, kind of procedural work by staff.
Thank you, Lindsay. I will just chime in and say we did consider, as we moved through this, the feedback from council members. I brought my form that I had made notes about. So I think people will see that not everything that individuals said, I really want it this way, is where we landed. But we tried to be considerate of sort of the consensus as we moved through the process. And I would agree with Lindsay that the idea is that while you might not want to read the ordinance, the ordinance is where you will find everything you need to know about what the expectations are for you. Do you qualify? And that's obviously not how we're going to advertise it. We're not going to make people go read the ordinance. But it is intended to be a clear, concise document that covers all the boards and commissions, articulates where there are exceptions for things like LTAC, where there's RCW involved, but does do away with all the bylaws and all these individual things while still respecting, I think, the goals of the boards and commissions. And I think that I like where we landed in terms of how the council engages with the boards and how the boards engage with the council. And I think it, obviously, staff is in there too. But I think it allows for some nice, clear communication between council and the boards and commissions. And also involves all of the boards and commissions coming up, you know, working with their staff, their staff person to, and council, to build a work plan, which I think will be useful and make sure that all of our boards are, that we're utilizing the people who are volunteering for us in a way that is meaningful, both to them and to us. So I'm excited about moving forward on this. It was fun to work with the group and come up with some stuff. And I have one thing that I would like to add that I didn't think of. I would like to suggest that we add that I didn't think of during our work. So as long as I have the mic on, I'll just mention that now. I would like to see us include, and I'm happy to let staff decide where that should be. And I'm actually okay with staff deciding, coming up with a proposal for what that looks like, whether it needs to be articulated in the ordinance, specifically what it is. I would like to have a, some language in the ordinance that we require OPMA records, ethics, and parliamentary procedure training for all boards and commission members. The thing that I have rolling around in my mind, which is what we do at the college where I work as a new employee, there are a number of training modules that you need to do. And then you have to take a quiz at the end. You get a certificate that says you've done it. So I would like us to have that as a requirement for service and it needs to be done within, I don't know exactly what that looks like, six weeks, two months. I like the idea of it being something you can do virtually so that we don't have the issue of we're having the training, but I can't come. Now I've missed the training and do I go back and watch it? I don't know. So again, I don't need to say specifically what it is, but I do think it would be valuable to, to us and to the members of the boards and commissions to have that training be required so that we have a reasonable expectation that everyone is coming to a meeting with a basic level of understanding of how things work and what the expectations are. So I don't know if we need a motion about that?
So counsel, I think it would, it would probably be helpful to have a motion and/or verification of forehands that that's a change we want to see. My suggestion, perhaps Attorney Bloor might provide an alternative would, would be to put it under 2.25.100, which is rights and duties of permanent committee members.
That seems reasonable. Is there consensus to include language around that? All right, excellent. Okay, I can be done talking now. Anyone else which, we'll go, Navara, Brendan?
I have a couple of questions. Okay, so the first one is, and I just want to hear some of the rationale or just make sure we're all on the same page. So I think historically, everybody's, all the committees had four-year terms with the exception of LTAC, which were two-year terms. And that is being changed in this document. And I want to make sure, I would like to hear the reason from the committee members who are on the subcommittee as to why that change is occurring, if there's anything other than just the regular standardization for all the committees or if there was something else that went into that. So that's my first question. I can also speak more to it as well. And then with, I, so in section 2.25.050, the appointments process, section G or subitem G says, "For appointment of city council members to permanent committees, the mayor will nominate the city council members appointees as part of the process of assigning council members to boards and committees. In January of even year, such appointments are subject to the approval of council," which is great. I'm really glad to see that item listed. However, it is unclear to me if that council member is a voting member, is part of the seven, is a ninth member. I'm unclear on where that council member lives in terms of the committee, in terms of the committee. So I'd like some clarification on that as well. And I could have missed it. I tried to read through a couple of times, but as we've said before, it's been a long document and I might have missed it.
Thank you. Lindsay, is your hand raised to answer Navara's question?
Yeah, I'll be happy to take the first stab. I think if, if we didn't make it clear, we need to make it clear. So we should specify that, you know, the, the way the council member appointment works for that and make sure that that's clarified. So then the other question of the standardization of four-year terms. I think we worked with the starting point kind of as a subcommittee group that it made sense to treat each of these advisory committees kind of with the same procedural rules. But there might be exceptions needed either by statute or by the way that the particular committee works. And so if there's a reason why lodging tax should be two-year or a different term other than four years, I think, I think we're open to entertaining that. It's not like our committee's still existing more. So it's really a question for the whole council at this point.
Okay, do you want to follow up?
Yeah, if that's okay. I Yeah, if that's okay. I I think, you know, every other committee really works, I think, on on a lot of policy considerations with the exception of lodging tax. And really lodging tax, like sole function is to approve grant funding to members of the community. And I think there's value in having more turnover in that committee because it provides different perspectives on a more consistent, like on a more frequent basis where there and and I think like having sort of the having a truncated term of two years provides people with enough time to sort of get their feet wet and get their, you know, get their sea legs, so to speak, of what's actually happening in the committee. But I I think that because there is so much like conflict inherently built into that committee that, you know, everybody on it, we're a small town. Everybody knows people who are applying, right? It's impossible not to build, you know, partnerships and friendships, even if you're not directly conflicted. And I think that those are really valuable, but without having you know, more frequent turnover, I I think it actually potentially leads to sort of more entrenchment of, you know, the same old people get this get more funding. You know, recently, we've had a really big upswing in tourist dollars. That is not necessarily the way it's always going to be. You know, I think we we'll have to see next year and in the next couple of years if if the amount of lodging tax that we are collecting remains the same. Or, you know, how that how that works. So I think just because we're in a good time now where we have the ability to fund everybody who applies doesn't mean that that's been the historical trend of this committee and doesn't mean it will be like that in the future. And when we have to make really difficult decisions on who to fund and who not to fund, I think that there has been you know, like, there has just been times where we've seen the the same people get more funding. You know, and I think a part of that is, like, I think part of the way to deal with that is by having shorter terms. I'm not, you know, if that is not the direction that the committee wants to go, I think this was a really solid document. I thought I would have more like substantive comments than I have. I'm I'm really impressed and I am really grateful to the committee members and the staff who put in obviously quite a lot of work in into making this document, I think, really valuable.
All right. Does anyone want to, do we want to have, oh, Bill, go ahead.
Just for reference for everybody, with particular regard to the lodging tax committee, what the state statute says is that the appointing authority, that's you, shall review the membership of the committee annually. Now that just says review the membership of the committee annually and make appointments as you wish. So you have the right to review the membership annually without changing anything as it is right now.
Thank you, Bill. Are there thoughts from council on the on Navara's point about the two year term versus four? My my, I think your points are, I'll go to Amy. Go ahead, Amy. Then I'll take my turn.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that, Mayor. I don't disagree with a lot of the points that were made there. For me, the value of the continuity between committees is maybe more important to me. So like, I guess what I'm saying is if we as a body wanted to change the term limits to two years, I would then ask that we consider doing that for all of the committees. And I'm not sure, that's a much larger discussion, but wanted to throw that out there and also just, you know, a ton of thanks for what I'm sure was a lot of robust conversation. Thank you so much, you guys.
Thank you, Amy. Leticia, do you want to go ahead?
I I think changing the term to two years for all of them, I I think that there's a lot of administrative burden that goes with that. Plus, I do have to say too, having historical knowledge being on a committee is helpful. So short, two year short terms when you're developing policies and stuff is having that historical knowledge about what happened a couple of years earlier is helpful as you're moving down the road. Whereas Navara pointed out that lodging tax, you're just awarding grants. But Bill also pointed out that we have the ability, and I don't know if it's written in here, I was just going to the lodging tax, if it's written here, that council automatically review the membership annually. And I mean, if that's something that we want to do and and look at that as incorporating it into here, I don't know. But I also think having that historical knowledge is helpful even on lodging tax. Is there a reason why you pick two years versus maybe a three year term or?
It's just currently two years. I don't mind about, I I think having, I think having the same person on for eight years for a fund for to fund organizations and potentially four people on who have been on for, you know, eight years is a lot, right? Or or potentially the whole committee, like, I I just feel like I just, I just feel like when we're awarding funds that eight years is a long time to be in the same position of very significant power of deciding whether people get money to continue their organization or not.
Let me go really quickly, Amy, and then I'll go back to you. I I feel like from an administrative perspective, that every having it be the same is I think that's where we were coming from. But you make compelling a compelling argument. It's not the right way to say it, but for lack of a better term, you make a compelling argument for having lodging tax be every two years. So I guess one thing I'd like to quickly just ask Carrie. If you, I I don't mean to put you on the spot, but as someone who's going to be managing these things, is that with only, if it was only one committee that was different, would that be something that you would feel comfortable managing?
If we stuck to the two year terms. So I I think that's just a part of what we do now. So I don't think there'd be any complication with that.
Mayor, if I if I can add to it as well, I think one of the reasons that I recall we shifted to two years was doing it, we had one year terms for lodging tax previously and trying to keep a fully appointed committee became very difficult. And so I think while I probably, I don't want to prevent councils' ability to review it on an annual basis, I would certainly prefer a two year term and have no objection to continuing with a two year firm to your term considering the uniqueness of that committee.
Thank you. I will say also, I don't think we need to put the review in the it would be my opinion, I'm speaking out of turn, my apologies. To put it in the ordinance, because I think part of our ordinance work was this idea that if the RCW says it, we don't need to say it. It's by default. If we're, if the RCW comes into play, the RCW is the default for that. So we probably don't need to specify the annual review. But I'll go to Amy and then Lindsay. Amy, go ahead.
I appreciate the opportunity. I think I'm going to withdraw my comment.
All right, Lindsay, Lindsay, go ahead.
Yeah, I I think Navara has raised some compelling issues for why we should make an exception from the uniformity of the four year terms for the lodging tax committee. So I move to direct staff to amend the draft to turn lodging tax into two year terms rather than four year terms.
Second. All right, any further discussion on that motion?
If I may.
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. I know you said you don't remember your whole nightmare. So I just want to point out too that I think what that is doing, this this motion would just amend two point two five oh three oh subsection A. All appointments except for appointments to fill vacancies will be for four year terms, except lodging tax for two year terms or something like that. I want to note that we do have subsection D under two point two five oh three oh, and that says that no person will be allowed to serve on a particular permanent committee for more than two full consecutive terms and may not serve on that permanent committee for four years following the end of their service on that permanent committee, provided that any person now serving on the permanent committee or the effective date of this chapter will be entitled to complete the term that he or she has been appointed to serve. I don't think this motion is changing subsection D. So effectively, somebody could serve, assuming we pass this on lodging tax for two two year terms. And then they would have a four year waiting period before they can serve on lodging tax again, which I think makes sense in terms of the the nature of what that committee does.
Thank you, Lindsay. So we have a motion to amend the ordinance by adding by by adding language, except maybe not, I don't want to say my motion. Can you repeat what you said? Sorry.
Yeah, that's fine. The motion is to direct staff to amend the draft to make lodging tax terms two year terms.
Thank you. That's better than saying the actual language because that gets us into trouble because then I'm saying the wrong language. That's what we have to use because that's what passed. Okay, since you just said it, anyone opposed to the motion to, oh, we can't, Amy's camera, sorry. All those in favor of the motion to change LTAC to two year terms, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry. Don't wait for the delay. Opposed? Hearing them, the motion passes. Carrie, is that all right with you that their eyes were delayed?
That's that's fine. Thank you for calling for the opposition.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Sorry, I'm just going to follow up on, sorry, Brendan, I'm just going to follow up about the council members because I'm unclear on what the intention was from the committee. I can speak to that quickly and then we'll go to Brendan. And other people can correct me if I'm wrong, but.
Point of information, which one was, what was the page we were looking at for that one?
G twenty eight, it's item G right in section two point two five. It's the second section at the top of the page. At the top of page G twenty eight, which is page eleven of the document, there's F and G and it's G. So it talks about the appointments of the appointment of the council members, but so before I speak to it, I want to quickly just confirm because again, I don't remember the whole thing. Can staff say whether there is more clarification elsewhere in the document? I don't remember that.
I I can add, I was looking at it after that question came up and for we we specify under each of the sections for each of the permanent committees, the composition. And so for utility advisory committee, it says there's three council members and lodging taxes says one council member. But then the other ones, it just doesn't say anything. It's silent about the council member. And I think that might be where we're, we might want to clarify it, just so that's not implied or confusing since this question's come up. But I'll defer to Bill.
Bill, do you want to take a stab? I saw you were unmuted and then.
It was the intent that all the committee members be voting members. But I would have to go back and make sure that that got into the final.
Yeah, so my recollection is that only the only on UAC and LTAC are the are the council members voting members. But they are otherwise appointed in an advisory role to be available to answer questions about like for planning commission. If we send something to planning commission and they have questions about it, the council member is available to answer those questions. That is my recollection of where we landed. But, okay, so where is that?
So Mayor, Mayor, that's consistent with staff's understanding as well as section G appropriately applies specifically to both the UAC and lodging tax committee as an example. But it also applies, in my opinion, to the communications section, which I am working my way to under two point two five oh eight five where it speaks to work plans for permanent committees. And it gives the opportunity for council to appoint a liaison to the other committees to bring forward recommendations from the council relative to the work plan. And so that liaison, my point is, would be appointed through the exact same process the same time of year. That is an option for council to do under this section of code.
So I guess, I'm sorry, just a follow up. But perhaps if by consensus, if we have consensus, I don't know that we need a motion, but that we at some, I I don't need to decide where it goes, but that we clarify that council members only are voting members on and make up the number of the, because that's the other piece is on LTAC. The council member is one of the seven. On UAC, the three council members are one of are three of the seven. But on all other committees, the council members are not a part of the seven voting members. And we probably do need to clarify that. That was an oversight, I think, on our part. Because it made sense to us because we were talking about it and we knew what we meant. But if it's unclear to other people, then I think we need to just put in a statement, whether that's in the individual committees or in that over the the sort of basic articulation that that the the other committees, the council is a liaison, nonvoting, nonvoting position. And not necessarily, I think it was our intention, this is my recollection of the conversation which happened over weeks and so maybe I'm wrong. That they don't even need to be there all the time, just that they're they're assigned to that committee. So if there are questions, they're available. They know that that's they so. I just want to clarify that.
And Mayor, if I could just be a little bit more precise, that's on page G thirty of the packet. It's under section two point two five oh eight five subsection one, subsection A.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification. Okay, thank you. All right. So we don't need to do anything. It's there. Great. Thank you. All right, anything else for this item? Yes, sorry, Brendan, you've been waiting. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, no, I was just going to make a motion to.
Moving on, you gotta, we're gonna, we gotta continue it. I mean, I guess we don't have to, but I think we we should so we can see the the changes and, all right. Thank you. So we will, oh, yeah, go ahead, Drew.
I had, so earlier was just my blanket, this is awesome, yay us. These are the three things I wanted to quickly address that I think should be very simple. G thirty two, let me flip over to that real fast.
That's the page number?
Yes. G thirty two, at the very top, current committee member names, city email addresses and each member start date of the committee, et cetera. This is what would be on each board committee commissions page. My recommendation would be to remove the phone number for the personal phone number and not have that as an option. I have concerns about record keeping requirements and OPA. If random committee members can have their personal phone number on the city's website.
Okay, any anyone have concerns about not allowing it to be there? Lindsay, go ahead.
Yeah, I I mean, this this section is optional. So optionally, committee members may submit for inclusion a biography, two hundred and fifty words or less, portrait picture and the committee member's personal phone number. I pushed to have my phone number listed on my business card as a city council member. It was going to just be city staff are going to take messages for me and then my constituents can't get in touch with me. I think I I have had no issues in seven years with people having access to my phone number. I think at one time I got called because it was the only number people could find to raise the garage door in the council chamber. That's kind of the only time it's been used. So if somebody wants to include their phone number, that's their choice. It's not a requirement. And I think that they can make that decision themselves.
Can I ask staff to address Drew's concern about it being a records issue?
So Mayor and Council, I don't, I don't know that this is necessarily a new, a new concern. I think one of the things that we did earlier this year is relative to ensuring council members have the opportunity to have wave phone accounts to ensure that if there are text messages being sent and there there are text messages being sent in their direction, that um their messages um and phone calls that are coming through a public system. We also know that that has a cost associated with it, and um, and we probably could not afford to apply the wave application to all of our boards and commission members. I think the concern um would simply stem from whether there are public records um going in the direction of a personal cellphone and how uh we retrieve those.
Okay, so maybe something we should think about um before we come back um on the seventeenth. Go ahead with your other two.
May I speak to that one again?
Um, quickly, yes, and then we have two more comment. We have the rest of Drew's comment and Latricia's.
The the fact that somebody has a personal phone i- is is irrelevant for the question of whether the record's a city record. And so, um, you know, if somebody, you know, we all probably have people who reach out to us on our personal emails and think that they're somehow like not getting in the record system, and we have to reply from our city email and say, you cannot, you know, contact me on my personal email, it's gonna be a public record. So I don't think we alleviate the issue by not publicly posting phone numbers. All we do is make it harder for the public to access the people who are making decisions on behalf of the public. So to me, it's a transparency issue that outweighs the very minimal liability risk of a record being on somebody's personal phone that needs to be disclosed for a records request, which is an issue regardless of whether it's published on the website. So I don't see how not publishing it on the website alleviates that issue.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, Drew?
My comment is referred to this section.
Okay, go ahead.
I I guess the recommendation, I, it says email, is this gonna be individual emails or?
No, they're always, everyone's assigned a council, uh, everyone's assigned a city of PA email address when they're on a board of commission.
Right. So on the planning commission, they get an individual email. Have we thought of just doing like planning commission as a whole, and it, one email and it goes out to the group instead of individuals?
We actually have that also. My email address from, is from planning commission timeframe, and then there is also just a direct one, much like council at city of PA. So there's also a planning commission one that does that.
Well, for that administrative burden, should we eliminate the individual and just go with a group planning? No? Okay.
Um, okay, go ahead with your other two.
Um, these are just the youth advisory number uh ones, and this might just be um lack of me being able to find it. Uh, for, I'm looking at page G twenty six, two point two five point zero three five, youth advisory members. Um, the first part of that is uh basically it's handled exactly the same as every other appointment. Catch is, those are four year terms. Do we want the youth advisor um positions to be four year terms? Historically, I think they're usually one year terms because of the school district. Uh, so I wanted to bring that one to the point. And then my other one was specifically the requirement of being a city resident for the youth member. I would recommend modifying that to be a resident of the city or a member of the Port Angeles School District. The Port Angeles School District extends outside of the city limits.
Um, okay, so I'm reading this section. You're talking, you said, um.
Do we want four year terms? Because it it, this reads to me as though youth members have four year terms unless I'm missing something in somewhere else. And my recommendation was to modify it that they're a resident of the city or Port Angeles School District. That covers either homeschool people who wouldn't be members of the school district, but also people who are outside of city limits who are members of the school district. So that basically covers our bases on both sides.
Um, I can speak to, I mean, we had some discussion about that. I'm happy to hear from other council members about their opinion about that. Um, but I think we decided that we were being rigid, for lack of a better term, um, with all the other appointments. So we have other, like, um, there are other potential non-resident appointments. I think there's only one other exception for UAC, if and when there was a a position for, when, maybe that's the two, two, I'm, anyway. I think we, when we talked about it, I appreciate where you're coming from, and I think when we talked about it, we decided that it should be consistent with all the other boards and commissions where it's, you have to be um a high school student in the city of Port Angeles, because it then also would not preclude, um, you could be a homeschool student in the city of Port Angeles, but you can't live up O'Brien and go to Port Angeles High School and be on it because you don't live at the city limits. And I see what you're saying is that you would like it to be either or. Um, so I'm happy to hear from other council members about what they think. Brendan, go ahead.
Yeah, I really appreciate that motion or that idea, Drew. I think, uh, you know, either uh, either or, and it, because it, it crosses the box if you live up O'Brien, you can still do it, or, but, and if you're, um, you know, homeschooled or uh attending uh or living in the city. I uh do think the four year term though is um not probably good, you know? It would be better to have more students cycle through that seat as opposed to um one person just holding the seat for four years, because it's, not only it would encourage children to be more civically engaged or to spread the um, you know, educationally uh of what civic duty and responsibility is to more students than to one student every four years. I'd rather have it go to four students every four years.
Okay. Navara, do you want to, I think you had your hand up, but.
Yeah, I um, I think that students should have to live in the city, just like their parents, just like anybody else, right? For a long time, we've allowed people who, you know, have some kind of like interested stake, um, who live outside of the city to be on our boards and commissions, and we are doing away with that, and I think very rightly so. Um, and I, I, I think that, um, I think that young people are also, like, should be held to that same standard. I think additionally, there are a number of people who live here in the city of Port Angeles and attend school in a district that isn't the Port Angeles School District, like going to Squim or going to Joyce. Um, and I think that, um, that I think it's important to think about the ways that we are um able to, I think the argument for allowing, um, you know, youth in the PA School District to uh, to participate means that there are going to be students who live not just up O'Brien, but in Squim, in other cities, right? But cities that have youth positions as well. And I think that, um, I think that it's important for us, I think this is a place where it's important for us to have that consistency. I do agree, I think that the four year terms are a problem. I think what will inevitably happen is that we'll have vacancies, um, that we'll have to go out for, you know, within those four years. I imagine that we'll have many juniors and seniors go on the, on the, you know, um, try to be appointed to the committees, which I think is lovely. Um, and then after, you know, one or two years, we'll have to go and advertise for that as positions. Anyhow, um, I would suggest one year, one or two year terms with the um possibility to go up to four years. I think you should have the ability to serve for four years while you're in high school.
Anyone else want to speak to this? I have a couple of thoughts I can share, but Latricia, go ahead.
I was considering that same thing, suggesting having an option where there's just, um, at the end of their year, they're like, yeah, I want to redo, it's, it's an easy option to just automatically renew and remain on the board. Um, gives them the freedom, the flexibility, but um I also understand, it seems like there's probably gonna be struggles with um getting a youth to participate. I mean, I've seen it where boards have a youth position and it remains vacant for a long time. So, um, I, but I think making it easy where it can be just optionally renewed, um, would be easy and reduce barriers, but I I do think that they should live in city limits and not have a requirement that they're attending Port Angeles School, just that they're just youth in the city limits. Doesn't matter if they're homeschooling or if they're on doing Seaview, it doesn't matter.
My mic is not on. Um, I'm gonna speak quickly to this. Um, I, well, I kind of already did, but I um am restating that I would like to keep it that they are a resident of the city. Um, to the four year terms, um, I kind of, I understand where everyone's coming from, and I think we will have people who don't serve all four years, but we already have trouble recruiting for the four positions we, three, four, three or four positions we currently have. So I think there is also some value, particularly in terms of engagement and participation in, if someone joined their freshman year, and to our point about four year terms and the, the knowing something, if you're only on it for a year, by the end of the year, you might be like, yep, okay, I'm cool, I'm gonna engage, be engaged and participate. Um, some students will just anyway, but I also think if they start early and stay on it, that's great, we have one less person to recruit. Um, and if they don't, then we fill it. Um, so I would be in favor of leaving it the four years because we have a number of boards and commissions, so we're still talking about a number of students, and because we historically have had issues recruiting. And wouldn't it be great to have a problem that in a couple of years, this is so popular that we decide we should change it to two year terms so more students get a chance to do it? Um, but for now, I would suggest we leave it the four years, um, so that if someone commits to it, they can do it all four years if they want to, and we are not in a position of having to continually go out and recruit, um, until we have the problem that more people want to do it. Um, Amy, go ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity. Um, I was gonna stay a little quiet on this, um, just mostly because of my attachment to being such a youthful member um of the community. But I have a quick question about the ages. Um, I know we keep saying um youth and student, and I don't have it in front of me, so is there an age range? And do the students have to be, do the youth have to be enrolled in school?
Um, it is fourteen to eighteen. That is, so it is, the language is that the youth advisor will be a resident of the city at an age ranging from fourteen to eighteen at the beginning of the term, a non-voting member, and be appointed through the process described in our appointment process, and um a parent or guardian of the youth advisor member must give written permission for the member to participate on the permanent committee. So fourteen to eighteen.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, okay, we'll go to Lindsay, and then Brendan.
Yeah, just in case it's useful, that was an intentional decision to not make it appointed by PA high school administrative staff and just have it be a youth member, um, and not a student member. So that, that, that was a very clear idea.
Brendan, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry, with the limit again thing, I sort of like, like sort of Latricia leaves it open ended, sort of like if you want to come back. So I think too, like when students uh or young people in general might see the idea of a four year commitment being a barrier. So the idea of maybe like, you know, it's a one year commitment with the opportunity up to four years, you could go. So there's a little bit more leeway. So somebody might be quasi-interested, have sort of a path, they're thinking about putting an application to be on the board, they might be the best candidate for it, they've only signed up for one year, and then they do it for a year, and then they're like, you know what, I, I don't want to continue doing it, which you can do anyway if you sign up for a year, but that barrier might be too much commitment for some folks. So especially if you're talking about a fourteen year. Uh, so maybe uh like opening it up for one, two, four years with the the ability to to keep going if you want, might be the better option.
All right. Um, is there, I'm trying to determine if there's any consensus on this.
Mayor, so far I don't show consensus on any changes.
I think I'm the only one who was like, nope, four years. So, um, I'm comfortable with the idea, so I'll just say it this way because it, more than one person has said this, um, one year term up to four years. Um, does that work for people? Renewable every year for four years? Carrie, is that administratively burdensome? And also, actually, before we, before we move on, can I ask the back row, because you all represent the committees that currently have students, do you have an opinion about that?
Um, over the years, we've been consistent about uh two years, and um usually it is the junior and senior year where they can drive and come to the meetings because they're at night. Um, and we've had one homeschooled person. Um, but yeah, it's been pretty consistent that they're usually on that seventeen, eighteen, sixteen, eighteen range.
So Mayor, I, since you asked, um, I like the conversation about, about the kids and the length, and I would want to be as flexible as you can, because if we get a freshman who's interested, um, that's a great opportunity for them, it's a great opportunity for us. Um, having spent a bit of time with the school's recruiting, it's, it's been really tough to get students, and I just would say, you know, just, we can be flexible, and if, you know, you're, it's a four year term, but you did it as a junior, well, you're gonna, you know, you're gonna leave into, and that's fine, and we recruit somebody else, but um to, as much as we can open up options to get, to get, you know, our youth interested, um, I would be a big fan of that. So, um, like, I think it'd be like, what a great resume for a person going off to college, that's who say they served on four years on one of our boards and commissions, and here's all the stuff they learned, and here's their, you know, prof, you know, references from us, you know, staff and electeds and all that. So, um, big fan of 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 that if we can get there.
So it, is our, is there consensus on the, appointed for, the expectation is a year, and you can do it up to four years? Does that work for people? Those are yeses, are you raising, yeah, okay. Uh, folks online?
I'm generally indifferent. I'll point out too that I don't think there's an age limit for applying to be a voting member of the committee.
That's true. All right, then let's, um, yeah, go ahead.
The only thing I was gonna point out, because you know how much I love simplicity, is um if we did one year, there are a, my default can serve a second year, because we already have it, that permanent committee members can serve two terms. Now, granted, if we really want to make sure they could do year three and year four, then my comment is no bearing on anything, but if we want to make sure they can have it at least two years, then um that's already in the provisions.
Yeah, I think, um, we sort of are acknowledging that they're a different, they're, they're running sort of parallel and not the same. So, so let's try at the next meeting, one year terms up to four years, so it's just different. Sorry, Carrie, it's another deviation for our super simple and streamlined, everything's the same. Um, did you have one more? Okay, um, any further discussion on this item for tonight? Okay, if you have, did you raise your hand, Calvin? Oh, okay. Wait, we're talking about youth membership muling, is that what you're doing? Sorry. I I probably got that wrong, actually, but, um, anyway. Um, all right, so we will continue this to the next meeting, and of course, if people have strong feelings after, um, you know, before then, please reach out to staff to give people a heads up, give them a heads up about what you might be asking for, um, before we roll into the next meeting. All right. And now we are at H, sorry, I one. I don't know how I did my numbering tonight, but um, uh, we'll go to Serena.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, so staff have been carefully monitoring the city's budget and have identified a potential cash issue in the solid waste fund, um, that was caused by higher transport costs than anticipated in the cost of service analysis, or COSA, um, as well as debt and settlement payments that occurred as a result of transitioning the operation of transfer station services to city operations. And so it is recommended that council take steps to ensure the cash in this fund is not fully depleted by year end, in order to meet the city's bond covenants and the city's policies. So the memo included on page um I one, or PDF page two hundred and sixteen, includes a list of options that may be utilized to keep this cash balance at acceptable levels in both the twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five fiscal years. The items included on this list would be implemented on an as needed basis, and uh they would also be implemented in the following order. So first, um, a hiring freeze within the solid waste division only. A second, the deferral of the principal debt payment on the interfund loan between the water and solid waste divisions, and the amount of seven hundred thousand dollars per year. And again, that's the principal portion only. The interest would still be required to uh be paid to the water utility. All other debt, so all the other bonds um associated in solid waste would remain on schedule. Uh, item three, deferral of all capital transfers from solid waste to other city departments. Item four, deferral of all solid waste capital projects. Five, the waiver of utility tax paid to the general fund with prioritization of amounts in excess of budget estimates. Item six- Item six would be the deferral of transfers in support of street maintenance. And item seven would be the early review of the COSA and adoption of increased rates. And that's, um, prioritized last, just to reduce the impact to the community as much as possible. And so tonight's staff is recommending council approved this list for use by staff in order, um, in the order that's presented in order to prevent the further use of operating cash in the solid waste funds until the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven cost of service analysis, um, is complete and adopted. Failures to take any kind of corrective action in this instance could result in some serious financial consequences, including the need for additional debt. Uh, the inability to meet our bond requirements or potentially audit findings. And so I am available for any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you very much. Thankfully, we don't have these conversations very often, so appreciate that. Um, are there questions from council? Or a motion? Uh, Latricia, go ahead.
Well, I, I guess my question is, um, I mean, first one I go to is your number one, hiring freeze. How long are we anticipating? I mean, would that basically be immediately after you do this? Or, or you say as needed? So how soon after, if this is approved, will you start implementing these recommendations?
So, so they are intended to be as needed. Um, we are anticipating that we are going to need to take some action for the twenty twenty-four year. Um, so the hiring freeze probably, uh, as the first option would probably take place, um, almost immediately. Um, I believe there is only one current vacancy in that division at this time.
Do we have any idea of how long that would need to be implemented?
Until we saw the cash starting to rebuild or until we have the cost of service analysis essentially, uh, complete for twenty twenty-six, which will occur in fall of twenty twenty-five. It is intended that we would, um, build in, um, recovering of those cash reserves within that cost of service analysis. And so this is just to kind of get us through the twenty twenty-four, um, end of year process as well as the twenty twenty-five budget year. Um, I would refer that to Director Curtin.
Thank you for the question. Um, no, our intentions are to remain status quo. We're, we continue to provide all the same services that we always have. We understand we're in, um, unusual budget times right now. So we're just looking to maintain things as, as best we can, status quo, we're pushing capital projects. And we're just gonna kind of hold, be in a holding pattern here, uh, until we can stabilize these revenues. And then continue to move forward as we would with any other division within public works.
Do you have follow-up?
Well, I, I guess I didn't hear anything about overtime, if current staff are working overtime or not. Or if this, you anticipate current staff would be working overtime? Or they're just gonna be no overtime, get the work done during your regular hours, or the work doesn't get done?
Um, so, great question. Barring normal operations, we're gonna continue to operate the way that we, um, always have. So we, we do generally always try to minimize the, the need for overtime. But at this particular moment, we're not talking about reducing facility hours, which would affect, you know, you know, the, the hours that, um, transfer stations are open, uh, as example, which would have an impact. We're not, we're not talking about that, um, at this time. Really just trying to hold operations status quo, um, for a period of time to kind of right the ship. Um, and then go back to, you know, proceeding, um, you know, as we would. The deferral of the capital projects, we still have needs here, right? We're just trying to live within our current means until we can stabilize our situation and then go back to moving forward effectively. So this, Serena and I have worked together on this. I am in support of this. I have reviewed this with the city manager. I have reviewed this with operations staff. So we, we feel this is our best, best path forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, anyone else? Does anyone want to make a motion?
Uh, we've authorized the staff's recommended sequential options for implementation in the twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five solid waste budget to maintain required cash balance thresholds as needed.
Second. All right. Thank you for your work on this and for, um, thinking it through and bringing us some priorities. For giving us a, a list of sort of what are we talking about? Um, and how will it be implemented? I appreciate that. All right, so we have a motion to authorize the staff recommended sequential options for implementation in the twenty-four and twenty-five solid waste budget to maintain required cash balance thresholds as needed. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Lindsay, are you a no?
No, sorry, that was a late thumbs up, so that's an aye.
That's all right, thank you. Okay, um, opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Sorry, I just wanted to be clear. Um, all right, uh, let's take a really quick break, come back and do, uh, council reports and public comment. All right, thank you, everyone. Um, we'll start with online council reports. Uh, Amy, do you have a report this evening? Let's go to Lindsay. Oh, thank you, Amy, sorry. Uh, Lindsay, do you have a report?
I'll pass on the council report, thanks.
All right, thank you, Brendan.
I have a better one, I have one next time. Lot of stuff coming up.
Navara, all of my meetings were canceled.
I will say actually, um, you know, there's many future events in, uh, December. And as I say every year, um, the, uh, the Port Angeles Yacht Club puts on, uh, Deck Out the Docks. So they have the docks open in the, um, evening for people to go and look at. Um, people put up, um, lights on their little sailboats and powerboats. And you can vote, um, for your favorite. And they have, you know, hot chocolate and apple cider and, you know, some holiday cookies and stuff. Um, so that is going to be, uh, I believe it's next Friday, not the sixth, but I think it's coming up next weekend. So I just wanted to let everybody know it's a great free event and a good opportunity to walk the docks.
Thank you, Drew.
No report.
Latricia.
Column County MRC is keeping me busy participating in some subcommittees and developing roles and responsibilities and priorities and strategic plan for the group, so.
Thank you. I don't really have a report tonight either, so go to Nathan.
Mayor and council, I have a few quick items for you this evening. I think one that, um, we'd be excited to have, uh, good council participation on is that on Thursday, December nineteenth at five PM, we'll be doing, um, the city's takeover of the Winter Ice Village and, and ice skating. So we're looking forward to that. Um, I think we'll have a lot of staff members in attendance. Also, just wanted to, um, make sure council has an early, um, notice that on December seventeenth, we anticipate a four PM start time for a special meeting and executive session. And then finally, want to make sure council has early notice that we do anticipate a pretty significant visit from our sister city, Mutsu City, um, from January fourth through January eighth in twenty twenty-five. So we're looking forward to that visit and hopefully we can get some good council participation in that visit as well. I know, uh, council member Karen, I had a lot of fun with them last year.
Excellent, thank you. All right, second public comment period. If you are virtual, you can raise your, um, virtual hand and we'll call on you. We'll start in council chambers. Um, if you wish to make a public comment, just come on down. Hold on, your mic's not on. Keep, say, say something again, doesn't, do you hear that? It doesn't sound like it's on. Hold on, is it dead? Okay. Yep, we'll use mine. No? Yeah. For folks online, we have a, a microphone that died, so we'll get going now. Okay, name residents, three minutes, go ahead.
Am I on? I don't have light, there we go. So I'm gonna go back and make a couple of comments on something on this, utility base rate, which is G two. My concern is your customer service reps out here, the very first time that, uh, you're gonna have some disgruntled people that are gonna know about the change. They're gonna get barked at. And so they better have some ammunition and some pre-warning about, uh, what, what's gonna happen. Or what could happen, unfortunately. Again, I'm gonna go talk a little bit about budget and spending of money. So two weeks ago, I mentioned that I have interest in, uh, some discussion that I heard brief, uh, comments on the, uh, radio with the city personnel being interviewed about some type of an apartment project. I'd like some information about it. It's much less expensive for the city staff under your direction to send me a narrative of what's gonna happen or what's being proposed or what's being thought about. As opposed to me sending in a public records request and, uh, city clerk having to funnel that around to every department or every email, all the correspondence, et cetera, et cetera. So please, I would ask the city council to ask somebody on staff to send me a narrative about the discussion of those items. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Go ahead. Just a reminder to state your name and whether or not you're a resident and the lights will keep track of your three minutes for you.
Okay, my name is Glenn Barbieri and I am a resident. Yeah. Well, hopefully tomorrow or Thursday, I'll be, uh, negotiating about restarting my science and science fishing group. Only we, we haven't been up there because I brought it up before. And the fact that, um, I would like to know eventually expand the program. But first I gotta get it off, first I have to get it off the ground. Now, uh, Drew, last time I spoke was, was it, I had it over a month ago. Drew brought up a brief comment concerning patents. Well, I am aware of that issue. However, being, um, a disabled veteran and food stamps, my ability to seek legal advice is rather limited. So that is something I am aware of, that for what I'm planning to do, learning more about things like copyrights and patent law and all that is going to be central. So if anybody has any suggestions and how I could do, but, and how I could go about starting that research, a budget of zero, I'd appreciate it. And the other, only development I really made that direction, I've applied to be a vendor at SquatchCon. I, of course, would do not know whether that'll be approved. No guarantee in that. But regardless, I still would like to get involved with that convention. If it only through Parks and Recreations, so I am going to pursue that. You know, that, that goal, and we'll see what happens. Okay, so, I'll take care and we'll see, you know, have a Merry Christmas.
All right, thank you.
Is there gonna be another meeting in city council in December?
Yes, on Tuesday, December seventeenth.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, anyone else? All right, then we, I don't see anyone else and no one online. So we are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Thanks, Amy and Lindsay for joining.